Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone for coming in this very important meeting of the City Council as we do to people's work. Council members, at this time, would you please stand for the invocation which will be given by Reverend Michael Williams of Olive Branch Baptist Church? And then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Reverend Williams, good evening.
Good evening, sir. Eternal God our Father, we come once again, God, saying thank you for another day. Thank you, God, for the mercy that you bestowed upon us early this morning. And now, God, as the leaders of this city, this great city, have gathered, along with the people of this great city have gathered, to discuss the business of this great city. God, we pray that you would be in our midst. We pray, oh, God, that you would allow all things to be done decent and in order. We ask you, God, for a heart of love, a heart of peace, and that, God, you will be pleased in all that is done on tonight. We give you glory, honor, and praise. It is in the name of Jesus we do pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much, Pastor. Members of City Council, would you please indicate your presence electronically?
Seven members of City Council are present.
Okay. Members of City Council, you have before your consideration the minutes of a call meeting of April the 11th, 2016, a call meeting of April 12th, 2016, and a regular meeting of April 12th, 2016. Are there any corrections to the minute?
Move adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. The minutes are adopted, 7:0.
Okay. Ma'am Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we have a special presentation. Mayor Wright will be joined at the Sergeant-at-Arms desk by the IC Norcombe basketball team.
My, my. This is indeed a pleasure, sir. All right. Madam Principal, how you doing, boss lady? All right? It is an honor to be able to invite you here, to recognize you officially for the great work and the pride that you've brought to our city through your efforts in athletics. I can tell you personally, being at the Siegel Center on that Saturday night, I was sitting on one of the endzone areas or behind the court and had a chance to view the entire crowd and watching everyone there with, was it five seconds or six seconds left on the clock? And what will we do? And how on earth could we pull this thing off? And when it happened, and I got to give, I think it was the Virginia Pilot photographer, and I saw that photo in the paper, and it said it all. And rarely do I compliment them, but I did. And I even did it on my Facebook page because it truly captured that moment. So, Coach, if you could join me up here, as well as the principal and athletic director, we've got a proclamation that we want to present to you. But before we do it, and so the mayor don't butcher all of these names, I want to ask if we could introduce each one of the players, everyone introduce themselves, Coach, to do that. And starting from our right here, and then I'll present the proclamation.
I have Assistant Coach Larry Thompson, Saquon Clark, Jawan Callenis, Jeremy Jordan, Darren Allison, DeShawn Roberts, Ian Clark, Kevin Ranson, Torres Jones, Carliffe Hamlin[304.83][304.83](I got you, Carliffe, I know I say your name), Jacquel Fintris, Assistant Coach Larry Thompson III, Athletic Trainer Nikki Wright, Scorekeeper Kita Amon, Athletic Director Aronda Andrews, Principal Shamika Pollak.
All right. Thank you.[322.12][322.12](APPLAUSE). Now, this proclamation reads as follows, and I will skip over all of the naming since we've done that. But whereas on Saturday, March 12th, 2016, the IC Norcombe High School Boys Basketball Team made history once again by winning the Group 3A State Basketball Championship, claiming their fifth state title in the last seven seasons, and becoming the 11th team in Virginia High School League to win three straight championship titles. And whereas the 15-player team with a cumulative GPA of 3.1 (APPLAUSE) consists of the young men that were just introduced, and whereas the Greyhounds beat Hopewell High School to win the championship with a buzzer beater in the final seconds of overtime, earning the victory with the score of 67-65. The tournament took place at Virginia Commonwealth Siegel Center in Richmond, Virginia. And whereas the support of their coaches, Coach Guzby, Coach Williams, Quentin Jones, Stokes, Larry Thompson Sr., Thompson III, and Joe Battle, including Principal Shamika Pollak, Athletic Director Mr. Andrews, Athletic Trainer Nikki Knight, the Assistant Trainer Cassandra Tynes, is it Tynes? Yes, Tynes, and their scorekeeper, Ms. Kita Amon, this Portsmouth Boys Basketball Team has once again pulled together in the end to prove that they know what a championship game is all about. And whereas our city is very proud of the 29-1 record, the Greyhounds have earned and the fine publicity that they have brought to our community by their good sportsmanship and inspired team play as state basketball champions. Now, therefore, I, Kenneth I. Wright, the Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, do hereby proclaim April 25th through May the 1st as the IC Norcombe High School Boys Basketball State Championship Celebration Days in the City of Portsmouth, urging all of our citizens to extend congratulations and best wishes to this team and their coaching staff for a history-making season. And witness whereof, I, and on behalf of the Portsmouth City Council, have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of Portsmouth, Virginia, to be affixed to this 26th day of April 2016. Congratulations, Coach and Ms. Pollak. I need you to both say a few words because we are short on time, but we are extremely proud, and we've got our Memorial Day Parade coming up, and we're going to slash, compare that and pair it up with the Parade of Champions. Is that right?
Yes.
We're going to have the Parade of Champions at our Memorial Day Parade, not only for IC Norcombe, but all of our students. And if you were at the State of the City, we went into detail with naming the young folks that received on National Signing Day scholarships for the different various schools. And so, we want to recognize all of them from all of our high schools, and we're going to do that at our Memorial Day Parade. But Coach, if you would first?
First of all, we'd like to thank the community for their support, but what you see behind your student athletes with a GPA of a 3.1, that means not only do they take the on-the-court basketball series, but off-the-court, they take the classroom series. So, again, give them a round of applause for their contribution.[566.91][566.91](APPLAUSE). And also, we couldn't do this without you all because without your support, we are nothing. So, this championship is also for you all.
Thank you. Good job, Coach.[584.16][584.16](APPLAUSE).
Good evening, everyone. It's a great day to be a Greyhound.[590.32][590.32](APPLAUSE).
All right.
I would like to thank Mayor Wright and the City Council for this honor, and we graciously accept this week in honor of our basketball team. I would like to thank our community for your continuous support, and we look forward to your continued support as we finish out this school year and head into a successful new school year in September. Thank you for everything.[614.04][614.04](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Good job, guys. Yeah, before we get started, you guys can go ahead and dismiss yourselves.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Go do your lesson.[651.66][651.66](LAUGHTER). Keep that 3.1 going.[655.12][655.12](LAUGHTER). Well, if you would just give them one second so they can leave.
Are they here?
Okay. And as they're leaving, I fail to recognize their parents, and if there are any parents here, let's just give the parents of all of these young men a round of applause.[684.82][684.82](APPLAUSE). Mr. Cross.
That's right. I got you, sir. Glad you said that. Going at the door.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to three minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your three minutes, you will see a green light. Two minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of three minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments. Public hearing, 16-132, public hearing to solicit citizen comments on the annual action plan. Our speaker is Mr. Mark Godolda-Kutrowski.
Good evening, Council and fellow citizens. I want to address the projects list from the action plan for fiscal year 2017. I have a concern about the way the money is allocated under the Community Development Block Grant section. If you have access to Table 9 in your documentation, you'll note that under the Affordable Housing parentheses, Owners section, the first on the project list, there's an allocation of $100,000 for the benefit of eight households during the fiscal year. If you look at number five on the project list, Public Services, there's an allocation of $209,544, and the benefit is listed as up to 5,000 persons. The lion's share of the nonadministrative allocation is to provide continued assistance to rehabilitate the site of the Portsmouth Sportsplex, and the amount allocated there is $852,907 in round numbers. My concern is, this is the second fiscal year in a row that a major chunk of the Community Development Block Grant funding is going toward the Sportsplex. And if that money were allocated among the other two categories, we would be able to help more people in the area of services provided, senior transportation, kids' meals, youth leadership development, and health and wellness. There are other ways to fund the development of that site at 1801, and that includes out of city revenues. These funds are limited, and I'm concerned that they are being overly allocated to something that is essentially a citywide project for everybody in Portsmouth, not just low and middle-income individuals.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing to solicit citizen comments on the annual action plan. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on the annual action plan but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to three minutes to speak on the annual action plan. Members of City Council, this public hearing is closed. 16-133A, public hearing to consider the annual operating budget for 2017. Our first speaker is Ms. Pam Clope.
Good evening. My name is Pam Clope. I'm at 501 Elizabeth Place in Portsmouth, and I'm President of People for Portsmouth. Portsmouth's 2016 budget froze 43 public safety positions and cut $800,000 from the sheriff's office. By December of this year, the police department was operating with 222 of its 264 authorized positions. There were 28 frozen positions with 14 vacancies. Homicides had risen to 27 in 2015. According to the city's February vacancy data, there were 16 frozen fire positions and 15 vacant positions. From the proposed budget, it does not appear that these positions will be reinstated. Instead of giving an additional $1 million to Portsmouth Public Schools after an increase in 2016 of 6.2 million, use this money to pay first responders. The school's 2017 budget shows 38 fewer staff members and a declining student population. There's nothing in the school budget for either vocational education or expanded academic programs such as the International Baccalaureate Diploma, two critical needs if Portsmouth Public Schools is going to grow, thrive, and attract students. Secondly, to date, Portsmouth has spent $5 million, just as Mr. Grit, just as Mark was saying, has spent $5,258,304 on the Pines property. That does not count the loss of $78,000 in real estate taxes annually. In 2017, Portsmouth plans to spend yet another $852,907 in federal funds for further property improvement. The last time I drove by the property, it was padlocked and not open to the public. This morning, when I looked on the city's website, the sports complex was not even listed as a recreation center. Please use this $852,907 for structural repairs in qualifying neighborhoods, or according to federal guidelines, it can even be used for emergency needs such as the seawall. These are easy fixes to do what you have promised to do. You have promised to provide for the safety of Portsmouth citizens. The proposed budget is not using tax dollars to keep residents safe from crime, fire, or neglected infrastructure. As council members, you have taken an oath to prioritize our safety. You can honor your oath by making these recommended budget changes, from the CDBG funds to take that $850-some thousand to put it towards infrastructure and also to take money from the school system.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Mr. Robert Turner.
Mayor of City Council, City Manager, my name is Robert Turner. I'm President of Portsmouth Police and Fire Retirement Association. All of you already know me. I come before you tonight because there was no mention of retirees in the proposal of a $1,000 bonus for employees. In the past, we got half of what was proposed for active members regardless if it was a bonus or a raise. We know why the city prefers to give bonuses instead of a raise because our salary doesn't increase like it would if it was a percentage raise. These men are up in age or live in the almost poverty level. We recently had a member that passed away. You can check with Tanya White on this. And his widow will have to live on $9,700. That means his income before he passed was $19,400 to take care of two people. I thank you, Mr. Moody, for bringing up our case during the work session. I implore the rest of you to vote for us to get a half, half a bonus when the city manager brings back her report. Thanks for the opportunity to speak on behalf of our city retirees.
Thank you, sir.
Council and fellow citizens, I want to thank the manager for two things that are different in this budget from last year. She did not balance the budget by drawing on the, on the Waste Management Fund, as was done last year, and she did not draw on the Risk Management Fund to do so. I was not happy about those actions last year, and she is not doing that sleight of hand again. With regard to funding for the schools, I'm disappointed that the school board did not follow my recommendation and list for you those items that they did not ask for in the budget because of the collaborative relationship between the superintendent and the city manager. Their frank discussions about what would be possible this year resulted in the school board tightening up on its requests and not going for things that I think are essential. But they reached a general persons agreement and did not ask for money to reduce classroom sizes, and they did not ask for money to fund educational assistance, both of which are vital needs. So, that may be why there has been no supplemental funding request from them because they have been trying to be good partners with the city in dealing with a difficult budget year. But then again, there hasn't been really an easy budget year since APM terminals came Lastly, I want to express concern about the money that is being transferred under the heading of payment in lieu of taxes from the water fund. I've never been happy with that. It's not something this current administration initiated. It has been going on for years and through several councils before the one that is seated here today. But I disapprove of that, that means of funding. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Manager, and City Council Members. My name's Melvin Parker, and I'm retired from the City of Portsmouth Fire Department. I am speaking for myself and other city retirees. My concern is about the bonuses that the city employees are going to be getting. In the past, retirees have been getting one-half of the bonuses of the city employees. There's a lot of retirees having trouble to live and make ends meet. I worked for 26 years, and there was no such thing as overtime. So, when we retired, the salaries were nothing compared to what the retirees are able to get now. We think that is the only fair and right way to do this thing. So, retirees need this one-half bonus to help us make ends meet. Your consideration and help would be greatly appreciated and helpful in this matter. We did the best we could do, and we hope you will do the same for us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ventoria Clay, and I'm with the Independent Center. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the Independent Center and Steve Johnson, our Executive Director, who wasn't able to attend today. And we would like to let the council members know that we appreciate the continued allocation of CDBG funding, which is used to assist us in providing disability-related services to the Portsmouth community. And I wanted to share with you that we partner, we are partnering agency with the Portsmouth Homeless Action Consortium to work together to advocate for housing opportunities and financial resources for those who are homeless. And this would also include those in nursing homes who were homeless at the time that they were admitted, and they would like to transition to the community and would need assistance from the homeless resources to help them with obtaining housing. And I would also like to add that we assist individuals with applying for the VHDA grant, which is used to cover the cost of making home modifications. And this is specifically for low-income renters. And some, many of the home modifications would include not only bathroom modifications, but also modification to the entrance to allow for a ramp. And currently, we are working with seven Portsmouth residents on this particular goal. And overall, considering all our services, so far this quarter, we have assisted 187 individuals, and to date during this fiscal year, 447. Again, we would like to thank the City of Portsmouth for your continued support in recognizing the disability needs and independent living needs of those with disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing to consider the annual operating budget for FY 2017. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to three minutes to speak on the annual operating budget.
Thank you. My name's Garland Alexander. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Members, my name's Garland Alexander. I live at 21, 2913 Tanbark Lane. I'm here tonight to speak about the one-time bonus checks that's being issued to city employees with exception to retirees. It has been the policy in the past that retirees receive one-half of the general wage employee bonuses, one-time checks, as well as pay raises. I understand this is coming from the Reserve Fund and is not a reoccurring expenditure. The retirees who need the most are not being considered for the one-half of the $1,000 upcoming budget money, like has been done in the past. We ask to receive the $500 bonus check to be, to become, in the coming year budget. If we can't, if we can't afford a half a loaf, surely we can't afford a full loaf. And I know y'all remember Ms. Cross has been out here several times and spoke, so she's asked me to put something in here for her. She cannot be here tonight. And I'm going to quote what she said. She believes that none of the council members now know what it is to live payday to payday. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members. Good to be with you tonight. My name is Jack Bray. I've just returned to Portsmouth. I was away for six and a half years with some health issues, and I'm back here. I came back in the end of December because I think this is a great city. And I was in Virginia Beach, and it's a great city too, but I think Portsmouth got its greatness. And I thank you for your leadership. However, what I want to speak to you about tonight concerns the input that you allow the Portsmouth City residents to give to you, okay, on the budget. And I was fortunate enough to go to the Churchland High School. We had a gathering down there on a Saturday, and I went down there. And I want to just say that it's important when we talk about your input to you that the public get to listen to you, and they give their public opinion. This is critical. How committed each one of you are is also critical. How you are perceived and truly show your interest in the public good is very important, and how you go about getting that information. At that gathering there, I thought the gatherings were good to have, and I did get there. It was from 9:00 to 11:00. But the sad part of it was, you know, when you go to a restaurant and it's open from 9:00 to 5:00, you figure you're going to get a meal, right? I mean, that's what they're open for. If they're not there, you go to another restaurant, right? Well, I got there at 10:30, and guess what? They said it's closed. It's already over. The presentation is over. I came there as a public interest citizen to get some information. And to Mayor Wright's credit, he was there with a lady from the Virginia Pilot and one other gentleman that was there talking to him, and I spent about 20 minutes...
We weren't together, by the way.
Yeah. So we chatted together and got some input. So I got his ear, and he got my ear. I think he got my ear more. But anyway, here's the deal. That was a poor representation of input. You should have been ready, prepared, to give me a presentation if you were going to have just one little computer thing and a survey, and that's the way you're going to have it, and I had to be there, and if I didn't get there by 10:30, I missed it, fine. You didn't tell the public that, okay? That survey was very poor. It was not open-ended questions about the budget so I could give input on economics, on firefighters, on how I want to contribute to the public economic well-being that you need to do to promote Portsmouth. There were all kinds of areas that weren't there. Your perception of what I was interested was in that survey. Go back and look at it. But a lot was left out. Thank you, gentlemen, for what you do. Let's do it better. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, very much. There's one lady up here. You said gentleman.
And ladies, I'm sorry if I left you... I clearly could see that. I clearly, Elizabeth, could see that. Thank you for my error.
Right. Thank you.
Members of council, seeing no additional citizens coming forward, this public hearing is closed. Item B, Public Hearing on the Recommended 2017 through '21 Capital Improvement Program. Our speaker is Mr. Mark Godalke-Kutowski.
Again, I want to thank the city administration for moving forward with work to repair the Churchland Bridge and the seawall. These are important projects, Churchland Bridge being near and dear to my heart and my home. I had some concern about the absence of allocations for continuing the sewer and water line replacements, but I was convinced by the presentations from our CFO and our Director of Utilities. They explained that the work that is currently in progress is not concluded and that there are pre-allocated funds that are still being used to carry these essential projects forward. So I am taking that at face value. They have never, to date, lied to me, and the proof will be the work that proceeds. But I have full confidence that what was begun in the interests of keeping our infrastructure operational and working throughout the 21st century will proceed at pace. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on the Recommended 2017 through '21 Capital Improvement Program. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to three minutes to speak on the 2017 through '21 Capital Improvement Program. Members of City Council, this public hearing is closed. City Manager's Report 16-134, Adoption of an Ordnance Authorizing the Transfer of the Portsmouth Public Schools Self-Help Insurance Program from the PPS General Fund Budget to the Risk Management Fund and the Alignment of the PPS Budget to Accommodate the Transfer, Including by Moving the Initial FY 2015/16 Health Insurance Reserve of $5,763,990... excuse me, $696 from the General Fund to the Risk Management Fund. Vision Principle, Efficient Service Delivery, Electronic Roll Call, and I have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. 16-135, Adoption of an Ordnance Accepting a Hazmat Team Enhancement Grant in the Amount of $70,000 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and Appropriating Set Funds in the FY 2015/16 Grants Fund for Use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services. Vision Principle, Sustainable Neighborhoods, Electronic Roll Call, and I have no registered speakers. We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. New Business, 16-136, Boards and Commissions, Councilman Edmonds.
I have none at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. 16-137, Items Submitted by Council Members.
Vice Mayor Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to add an item to the agenda.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second to add an item to the agenda. You'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0.
Okay. Yes, Mayor?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion to terminate the city auditor effective immediately per the terms of this contract.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 5-2.
Okay.
Yes. My item that I was submitting was actually to have some information presented from the auditor from our report. I think that what has just occurred, I think it is reckless and it's a disservice. I believe that the standard that was used to make the decision was one that was not based on any type of criteria, but I think that it was basically a random decision. So I voted against that. I would like to request that if it's not an objection from council, that the VRS issue that we have discussed in regards to the double payment that was received for payment and retirement check, based on our discussions, that that issue be forwarded to the Commonwealth Attorney and also to the State Bureau of Investigation. If there are no objections from council, I would ask that our attorney forward that information on.
I object. Members of council, Mr. Moody?
I object. Mayor, in fact, I think it's important for the audience to know that the city attorney also did not recommend that.
Okay. Mr. Chair? Okay. All right. You do not... Okay. We do not move forward with it. Thank you, Dr. Whitaker. Do you have another item? Is that it?
No, that was just clarification. The city attorney, that statement that was just made was a misstatement. The city attorney asked that it be a consensus of the council before we move on that.
Correct. All right. Mr. Moody?
I'll stand by what I said. I don't want to get in a debate.
Okay. All right. You're good. All right.
That was a closed session, correct. Wasn't that closed session, Mayor?
What Mr. Moody just talked about?
No, what Dr. Whitaker just talked about.
Mr.... Dr. Whitaker?
Yeah. Just want to make sure that I've been requesting updates publicly, and we have discussed this item publicly. And I'm surprised that the citizens would want to keep that type of information as much as we have been talking about transparency and upwardness. It's interesting that that's not an issue now, so...
All right. Thank you.
Saying by what I did.
Okay. Mr. Moody?
No, I was going to agree with my colleague. I think a $1,500 fine is in order to Councilman Whitaker.
Madam Clerk?
Excuse me, Mr....
I'm sorry, Dr. Whitaker.
Is that where we say second?
I thought Mr. Moody has been saying that the council doesn't have the authority to fine. So are we being... I mean, what side are you on?
I thought that until you fined me, Councilman Whitaker.
So you have no basis. That's what you're saying. You have no basis.
You'll find out shortly.
Thank you all very much. Let's move on. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. 16-138, Report on Pending Items, and we have none this evening.
No pending items.
16-139, Non-Agenda Speakers. Our first speaker is Ms. Betty Ashbery.
Betty Ashbery, the mayor's mean-spirited older lady from Churchland is here tonight. You know, in recent years, we've had beautiful murals that have been painted on sides of buildings in old town. We've had sculptures placed all over the city, and we've got between a $40,000 and $50,000 portrait of Mayor Holly hanging right outside of council doors. Dr. Holly's portrait was painted by Ralph Cowan, and he is a Portsmouth native. He's a graduate of Wilson High School, and he's over a 60-year friend of mine. He painted almost everyone, from President John Kennedy, Governor Douglas Wilder, Michael Jackson, and more well-known people than I could stand here and repeat if I was here all evening. So he wanted to give something back to Portsmouth, and he had always thought of Mayor Holly as a gentleman and a nifty dresser. So he picked out Mayor Holly to do the portrait to give to the City of Portsmouth, so anticipating that someone was going to notice that in the left-hand corner of that portrait is the monument. Now, I foresaw there was going to be a problem, so I called Ralph. I said, "Ralph, why did you put the monument in the portrait with Mayor Holly?" He said, "What monument?" I said, "The one that was standing on Court Street between where the famous used to be in the old courthouse." He said, "Oh, I just always regarded that as a piece of art." He said, "Besides, I stood across the street on the corner as a little boy in soul papers." He said, "And that's one thing that always reminded me of the City of Portsmouth." So Councilman Whitaker, are you going to insist that we move that portrait of Mayor Holly because the monument is standing in that portrait? You know, we have problems in this city. We have homeless people. We have understaffed fire and police. We have problems at social services, and we've got a myriad of other problems. And we are zeroing in on a hunk of granite that's honoring dead people that died in a war over 100 years ago. Shame, shame, shame on some of you. And I got a quote for you tonight, Mayor. Nearly all men can stand adversity, but if you want to test a man's character, give him power. And I think we're seeing a lot of that now. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just for the record, I would like to say in regards to what Ms. Ashbery just stated about the mayor, that I believe it was Mr. Joe Wright who stated some time ago that he and the mayor worked on removing the monument. So I... Excuse me?
That's not correct.
I thought that's what you said on record. Well, I know Mayor Holly was against the monument, so the picture and what you're talking about isn't consistent.
All right. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Randy Bailey.
Well, if you really want to remove the monument, like I said, you can go ahead and try. But I can guarantee you, this Memorial Day parade may be the last one that veterans ever have anything to do with, because if you don't want to honor all the veterans, then maybe the veterans don't want anything to do with this city, and neither will anybody else. Think about that. Now, your $1,000 to the city employees, that's a really good bribe when it comes to trying to get votes. If I remember correctly, that was done by up in New York, gerrymandering and voting. I don't know how that's going to work for you, but I don't think the police, fire, and EMS and Sheriff's Department is going to go for it. The first page of this is comments of what the people in this city are thinking about you. Needless to say, it's not good. The second page is a letter from an outstanding law firm about a VRS issue, which it states that there's no issue. The last two pages are about the crime rates in this city and also about housing for sale. There are 1,100 houses for sale in this city right now, 141 foreclosures, and almost 261 abandoned homes. Now, when people go on a real estate guide, and that's what they see, do they want to come to this city? You gerrymander the budget? I asked for Harry Houdini to come out here and explain it to me. I don't need him to explain it to me because I know what's going on. You eliminate positions. You eliminate things. Yeah, you can make the figures say anything you want to. And it's amazing how that works. But when the end game comes around, hello, Detroit. You want the federal government to come in here and run this place? You want to take the trash away from the Navy over at the shipyard? Guess what? There are ways the Navy can get around that. You may not like the results. I've already heard the results, and I'm not going to err them because I haven't given permission to do that. Think about what you're doing. It comes back and bites you in the butt. You're going to be surprised. You're all going to court. Moody's got an attorney. I hope everybody else has got their own attorney because I don't expect to see tax dollars paying for it. And I will fess up that, yes, I was the unknown individual at Churchland High School, and no, I wasn't with you, but I was standing there talking to you, Mayor, just so the people Y'all have a nice evening.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
Ms. Maggie McGruder?
Maggie McGruder at 111 Has Street. As I said at the city council meetings, I look at you council members, and you are all really special people in our city. You are all of our leaders today. You make all the big decisions for our city. The citizens of Portsmouth want to be a part of your decision makings before the decisions are made here in our city. Yes, we have said that we want Wheel Abraider to keep the trash contract, and that we want the money to stay here in the city of Portsmouth. We don't want a transfer station here in Portsmouth. We have our own trash trucks. The people of Portsmouth want to be heard, and we want to hear something from y'all. The civic leagues, they talked at the last city council meeting and asked you to support Wheel Abraider, and they told you why. All I want to say tonight is, please listen to the people and give us some feedback on items that concern the city. Not only about the trash contract, but about things that we need to know about our city, about land purchases, contracts, and just big projects that we want to know about and that things are going on in our city. We just want to have some voice about some of the big decisions that are going on in the city. And thank you for all the time that you give to help our city. Sometimes three minutes is not a lot of time to say thank you because people just have so much to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ashley Hickman?
Good evening, city council and fellow citizens. I'm Ashley Hickman, and this is Kimberly Wimbush. We stand here on behalf of the group parties in the community. We are grassroots organization composed of individuals who share a common goal of uplifting, inspiring, and educating humanity in every event that's possible. In the last six months, we have held events such as a Youth that Ripped the Wrong Way for children 18 and under, a Heartbeat Gala for heart disease awareness, a Passion for Breast Cancer Awareness, and just as else, a trip where we put together and took over 50 children to the 20th anniversary of the Million Man March. My purpose here this evening is to invite each and every one of you to the Second Annual Hampton Roads Lupus Walk for the Cure. It will be held Saturday, September, I mean, Saturday, May 21st, 2016, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. here in the city of Portsmouth at the I.C. Norcombe High School at 1801 London Boulevard. The walk-up and late registration will begin at 8:00 a.m., and the walk will begin at 9:00 a.m. Immediately following the walk, from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., there will be a free Zumba class held by the Fit Bar, a superfood cafe located here in the city of Portsmouth. Get your friends and family together, and come out and let's walk together in unity for one purpose, celebrating the lives of those affected by lupus and fibromyalgia. We have so many surprises in store for the community that day, and are excited about all the people in the Hampton Roads community that will be walking with us against fighting the cure for lupus. For more information, you can contact us at the hrlopuswalkforcur at gmail dot com. And as of now, we have about 1,300 people registered already. And I can say that Mayor Wright was at the first annual walk that we held about two years ago. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. I was doing something else. Ms. Donna Si.
My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. My topic for tonight is about whether or not the people living in Portsmouth are being ruled by six kings and one queen or by we, the people. Principles of Liberty 10 states that the God-given right to govern is vested in the sovereign authority of the whole people. Is this happening in Portsmouth? No, it isn't. We are not governing ourselves through our elected representatives because those we have elected think like the royal families back in the 1600s. They believe they have the power to govern the people by divine right. Or in other words, they declare it's a God-given right to govern the people. We, the people, are saying the right to rule is by our consent. The way our city government is set up, it doesn't give us a way to give our consent. City council votes on the members who will serve on the boards and commissions, not the citizens. There's a public hearing after the planning commission's work session. That's because there is a state code for them. Our city is in financial difficulty because we, the people, have not given our consent for two properties to be taken off the real estate tax rolls. One property is the pines at 1801 Portsmouth Boulevard. The people did not give their consent for this property to be purchased. The request to purchase the property did not go through the Parks and Rec Commission or even the Planning Commission meeting to have a public hearing. The city council voted on August 28, 2014, the kings and queens removed revenue of $78,000 yearly from the real estate tax rolls. The expenses have outweighed the revenue by paying $80,000 for safety and security, $170,000 for gym rehab, and $682,000 to rebuild the park. The second property was purchased on September 14, 2014. The kings and queens purchased 801 Water Street. It took $38,000 of revenue off the real estate tax roll per year. The expenses were $2,800,000 for the purchase and $750,000 plus to rehab the building. These rulings demonstrate council members believe that they have a God-given right to govern the people without their consent. This is why our city is on the verge of bankruptcy. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Meeks?
Thank you. You know, if you go to Virginia Beach, they spend $25, $30 million on rec. You go to Chesapeake, they spend about the same thing. We try to do the right thing for the kids because we thought they deserved another place to play, and we get grief. "Oh, you're wasting this. You're wasting this." Any of y'all can come up here and run for this seat. And when you talk about the kids, you know, we have to prepare them for the future. We've got to give them things to do so that we stay off the street. You know, I listen to her, kings and queens and this and that. God, I hope you win. Because I don't come up here and give you crap that you give us every week. You're going to need more than that.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Ursula Murphy?
Did you say you hoped she wins? My name is Ursula Murphy, and I live here in Portsmouth. I work here in Portsmouth, and I love Portsmouth, Virginia. So I'm going to talk about some of the good things that are going on in this city.
Thank you.
Yes. This Thursday, day after tomorrow, the Starbase Victory 11th Annual Golf Tournament at Elizabeth Manor. Rocket launch start at 12 o'clock. I can't help it, I'm still laughing. On Saturday, April 30, the Oasis Walk for Hunger, 8:00 a.m. Elvira Johnson and the Wilson Ward Civic League will have the Helen Norman Scholarship Brunch Saturday, April 30, 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. Larry Jones and I Love Portsmouth, Virginia with the Stop the Violence Movement again Saturday, April 30 from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. The Starbase Victory Give Local 757 Kickoff Party at Roger Brown's with Mo Cowbells will be Monday, May 2 from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. The Portsmouth Law Enforcement Memorial Service at St. Mark's Missionary Baptist Church Tuesday, May 3 at 2:00 p.m. Thank you, Dr. Edmonds. The Park Mother's Day Open House Saturday, May 7 from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. And the Gospel Arts Festival that same Mother's Day weekend. Vice Mayor, I hope that you will be the mistress of ceremonies again this year for the 133rd Annual Memorial Day Parade. There's a surprise this year. There will be another new entry, and that Starbase Victory will have a float in that Memorial Day Parade. And I'm not going to give away the theme except to tell you that it is in keeping with our mission statement, we are launching Futures One Child at a Time. And lastly, late this afternoon, I found out that Portsmouth-owned Tracy Link and her company Integrity Security have been recognized by Inside Business and have been selected as one of this year's winners for the Entrepreneurial Excellence Award. This award ceremony will take place June 13. So when you see her, you talk to her, please congratulate her for this outstanding achievement. Thank you.
Thank you. Ursula, let me just say, on the Memorial Day Parade, I actually asked Dr. Albert Williams, veteran, citizen here in Portsmouth, former superintendent of Richmond Schools, is going to be our emcee for this year's Memorial Day Parade. I've tried to, in the time that I've been here, rotated and asked citizens, primarily veterans, we've had Mr. Wright, we've also had Dr. Edmonds, Steve Heretic, Ask Elizabeth, and who else am I forgetting? Someone else, who?
General.
Yeah, General Alonzo Short.
Yeah.
And so this year, I went with Dr. Albert Williams, and so he's going to do a great job, and we'll make sure he plugged the Starbase float as well as our float of champions with all of our schoolkids on it.
That's right.
So thank you.
Maybe Ms. Simmons will be able to ride with us on the float then.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Well done. Okay, Vice Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Murphy, thank you for giving my report tonight. I was sidetracked on another matter, but that reminds me of one important thing we didn't mention and absolutely should. On Sunday, this Sunday, May 1, the Portsmouth Community Concert has a very special guest at Willett Hall at 3:00 p.m., and that is Portsmouth's very own Crystal Williams, who is a graduate of I.C. Norcombe High School and is a premier opera singer in Philadelphia, and she's coming here to sing for community concerts on Sunday afternoon at 3:00 p.m. I heard her myself over the Christmas holidays at Third Baptist Church sing "The Messiah." She is really not to be missed. She is really outstanding, and that's this Sunday, the 1st, at 3:00 o'clock at Willett Hall.
Good, well done. That's right. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Our final speaker is Ms. Shilla Joseph.
My address is 139 Grand Street, Portsmouth, Virginia. I had an interest in speaking on a topic about something that you had spoke about, Mayor Wright, about how students go and get an education and come back in the area, and some choose not to. I was going to speak on it, but I had asked someone tonight a question, and so I decided to hold off on it and talk another time about it. But I wanted to ask, since I had a little time, could I speak on something else?
Absolutely.
I keep hearing over and over about the monument. Personally, myself, I don't know who's for it and who's not, but for us removing the monument, myself, it wouldn't even matter to me that it's there because of the fact it's been there so long. And I remember at Norcombe, we discussed the part about someone had said that it costs $100,000 to remove it, and I was saying that I feel that why should we waste money to move something that you can't change the person's heart, you know, and everything, to do something positive with that money? And also, I wanted to address that, there's a lot of people that get an education, and they don't have opportunities in this city, you know, some of them, and they do everything they can to get an opportunity to share the different things that they went to school or college for. We also dealing with a lot of racism from the top to the bottom, and I would like to address that part. I'm still believing in my heart that we could get a lot more accomplished by addressing the things that our city need that for us, the citizens are asking for. And instead of being divided, and we, you know, keep saying the same thing over and over, I can say for myself, from a child up, that's all I've been hearing, a lot of people cannot change their mind about racism. But you can make a difference by doing things together for those that's willing to work together. And a lot of things have been accomplished in this city, but still, a lot of people don't want to give those that made it happen, who all involved, credit. It's because of racism. And I choose to say this myself, that I wish people will also remember that, I'm going to use for an example, we have other people in our city, but you don't see none of them sitting in this seat talking about anything, and I won't hold it up because they have a success.
Right. Thank you. Ms. Jelz, I hope you do next time come back and talk about the piece that I shared about kids going to college and not returning. It's referred to as brain drain because we've got a lot of things that are not happening in our region, and you mentioned racism, you mentioned a lot of these other things that deals with inequality, and those are the things that we have to address as elected officials and change policies and programs to make sure that when our kids do go off to school and want to come back, if they want to start a business or if they want to be a part of something, that they can do that. And we're recognizing all of the different cliques and all of the different things. These are the regions that we've compared ourselves with, Charlotte, South Florida, Atlanta, Tucson, Arizona, Texas. There are a lot of those places in there that those things exist, but they understand inclusiveness, they understand the bottom line, and so when it comes to young people that want to get ahead and don't want to tackle those issues that you just mentioned, they don't want to come to these areas. So until we are able to change policies and programs to make those things inviting for our children, I mean, they're going to continue to leave. I think we were the only region on the eastern seaboard that had an outward migration. All of the other regions here, from Raleigh, all of them had an inward. So our folks are leaving and not coming back, and these aren't just college kids, these are in general. And so we, as a region, are trying to address that and do some of these business startups and all of these other types of things that will be more attractive. But unless we change policies, people are going to continue to not select certain folks because of whatever criteria, the color of their skin, their gender, and all of those things. And it's incumbent upon us to take those issues on and resolve those matters so we can have a better region. This isn't just Portsmouth, this is all the Hampton Roads. We've got 1.7 million people in this region, okay? We're projecting another 300,000 will be here in the next 20 to 30 years, okay? Those people won't stay either if they come here and don't see opportunities and things of that nature. So thank you for your comments. Come back and speak on that, but I wanted to give you something to chew on so you can take that with you and come back next meeting, okay? Thank you for your comments. All right, with that, we adjourn.